I did, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, well, definitely.
Use that camera.
Good evening, everyone. I call the meeting to order in seven oh one if we withstand the pledge of allegiance, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think everybody's here but Rachel and Tim.
Yeah, nine oh three wouldn't take Rachel.
The form is nine oh three of a thousand. Rachel, Morris, and Tim Block will notify us ahead of time that they would not be here tonight. And our student CJ notified me at a time that she would not be here. I don't have any additions or adjustments to the agenda. Do you have you?
I do not.
Tom.
Oh, no, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, there are no adjustments. So next up is approved minutes of November twentieth, twenty twenty five. All right, a second.
Second.
Any comments or corrections? Hey, all in favor? Posed, abstentions?
Eight thirty four, zero sixty nine.
Eight thirty four. Motion passes eight thirty four to zero to sixty nine. Next up is the reports, and there's no board chair report tonight. So next up is superintendent's report.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to do something a little bit unusual. Uh, I would like to, if Tim is okay with it, I'd like Tim to talk about what happened with the project to replace the roof at the seed building because Tim and 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 his friends did a fantastic job. And I just want to give the credit where the credit's due. But, Tim, if you don't want to speak about it, I can. I just thought it'd be nice if you would share kind of an overview of what occurred, and we will be inviting all the volunteers to the next meeting to to recognize them.
Excellent. Uh, yeah, so following our last board meeting, um, we showed up the following morning, Friday morning. Uh, we had the roof halfway stripped, I think by quarter of eight. They were begging to come off. The other side strips, uh, before we took break in the morning. We did not find any rock. We were really, really lucky in that regard with the number of leaks that were coming through the building. We really didn't know what we were going to find. Um, and we had everything weathered back in and all of the shingles relayed on Friday. Showed back up Saturday, reran the fascia and the shadow board. So it really went as smooth as possible. We were very lucky.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah. And then, and and I, I think, uh, I would add that, um, it was kind of fun because we we identified early on that there needed to be a lead on the project, so we agreed that Tim would do that. I got told no at least three times, but I enjoyed being a good doobie, not doing the wrong thing. Uh, Matt was there. Matt, do you want to talk about anything? I mean, your dad was there.
I was just thinking the piston rest would be generosity of the time and just the quality of work and how quickly you guys got it done. It's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I was sore until Monday afternoon because I'll tell you that roof has a low pitch and picking up those shingles and moving them around. I was the chucker. So I was the guy at the top that broke the shingles and threw them to people. And, uh, Nicole's husband, I said, I think your new nickname is the Wolverine. The guy's an animal. He peeled more off that roof in thirty minutes than I in in five minutes than I did in thirty, but I was still trying. But I think that the reason why I wanted Tim to talk about it was because, um, we've just been talking about, you know, that I I couldn't, I walked through the building. So in the middle of the day, I forgot I had to go have a video taken for the proposed bond at the the high school. And I just have to say that walking through that high school, the positive vibes from everyone, staff, students. I've been doing this for a long time, twenty five years. I've never seen anything like that. And so what I loved was that we focused on helping the students and we just got to it. And you could feel it in the air. So I just wanted to thank everyone for their support and thank the volunteers, but mostly I just want to thank all of you for coming together as a board because the the place where everything in the culture of the district starts is in this room. And so everyone worked together on this. And yeah, we fixed the roof, but that isn't what really got fixed. What got fixed was some really important cultural vibes. And I can't thank you enough for that. Um, there's no words for it, and and so I'm so, I couldn't be more grateful. But I also have never had a better day at work in my career. It was probably the best day I've had at work. I mean, when I'm going to tear up, when his dad got on that roof at eighty four and got down to the corner by the shed, and he's down there scraping off the shingles, and I said, Mr. Lash, can I, can I do that corner for you? No. Holy smoke, I thought my wife had dagger eyes. So I, I, I quickly retracted and said, thank you, Mr. Lash, for being here. I'm so grateful to have you. Um, but it just couldn't have gone smoother. And I have to say that, uh, the other thing that's been super positive is Mr. McNelly is just so grateful to that is like it's rained the other day. I called him and I said, it's rainy. How's it going? And he's like, no, we're good, dry as can be. So that just meant the world to me. So thank you, everybody who helped. And, um, I can't wait to do more like that. It doesn't have to be a lot. A little bit goes a long way to show that we're in it together. We're not always going to agree on everything. There's stuff in this room that's going to come down to votes. So vote on it, and then let's get back to the kids. Right? And that's just the way it is. That's America. I love America. We can disagree in this room on something huge. The votes come down, we're done. Let's get back to work and helping the kids. And that's what we did. We we put everything away and focused on children. And and I have to tell you, the number of high fives, fist bumps, and thank yous in that high school when I walked through to go to that video was, I've never seen anything like it in my life. And and I thank you, Leah. I know you worked really hard to try to get a free donation, and then your boss gave the money for the 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 sheathing if we needed it. Tim's boss sent a couple of people. I just, I don't know how to say it. We do just a little bit like that every once in a while. What it does for the culture around here is unbelievable. So thank you.
I'm thinking on you for a moment. If you were sore and tired at the weekend, but Mr. Lash wasn't.
Yeah, yeah. I know. I started to think about that. I got on my hella bells. I'm like, I gotta get to, this mountain bike thing isn't cutting. You're gonna have to get to some more activity.
Go ahead, Melvin.
So I I didn't manage to be there, but I'd been working the outside. I watched everything as it took place. And it's not just our community. It is the whole state of Maine that watched this project through Facebook. And it worked. They asked, well, why can't I district do it? Why can't I district do it? Why aren't we doing it? Why aren't we doing it? I mean, the positive vibes that we got out of that small project, I call it, compared to what we need to do. Yeah, it's just, it it blows my mind right away that we can do it. That we need to keep doing it. Thank you.
Melvin, I never thought I'd hear you say the word vibes. Spend spending a little bit of time.
Anyone else have questions? Okay, next up is business manager's report.
Good evening, board. It's hard to get excited about my stuff as a brand new roof, but we'll try. Um, not going to talk about the new bus tonight. We're going to table that, run it through the facilities and finance, um, next time. So there's going to be a little delay there. Um, my office is working on getting ready for support staff negotiations. For those of you who haven't been on the board, we do negotiations every year. Um, this year up is support staff. Um, next year will be teachers, and then the year after that will be administrators. Um, and my team and I are starting to work on, um, the FY twenty seven budget. Because, you know, we're still being audited for twenty five, and we're still in twenty six. So why not open twenty seven? That'll be fun. Keep me out of trouble. Um, other than that, I just wanted to draw attention to, um, Storm gave me some pictures of the meals that her team put on. And, um, just want to give a little recognition to the food service team. They they did a really nice job over the Thanksgiving holiday. So unless anyone has any questions, sorry. Thank you.
Um, I just, I didn't, originally I didn't have any, but sorry to didn't mention that. Tom and I did receive, um, yesterday a letter about, um, the support staff wanting to, um, meet for negotiation. So um, there'll be an email coming out at some point, um, letting the people know about when we need and everything. So, um, next up is student representation.
Thank you, Danny. Um, some sport updates. Basketball this weekend is the start of the basketball season. The girls have a home game tomorrow, and the boys have an away game at Risc tomorrow. Indoor track, the indoor track team is having their first meet of the season on December twelfth at Bowden with a team of six. The first wrestling meet is this Saturday at Madomic. And read through and auditions for the one act theater production are happening in the next few weeks before Christmas break so that rehearsals can begin in January. The debate club, um, has started in the past few weeks and is getting off the ground. And hopefully by next year, the club can become official and participate in competitions. And if I have a plea.
Anybody have any questions? Okay. Um, next up is reports from administrators. I know there's some reports in the packet. Does anybody have anything they want to add? Um, so next is audience with the pocket. See if anybody summed up. No? Okay, nobody signed up. Um, so next is action items. Go ahead, Rick.
Oh, I make a motion that the board approves for second read. Policy BEDH, public participation at board meetings. Policy J I C K dash E one, R two forty bullying or reporting form. Policy J I C K dash E two, R two forty bullying investigation and response forum. Policy J I C K dash E three, bullying summary of disciplinary and remedial actions, and policy K I, visitors to the school.
Second.
Rick, can you? Any questions? Okay, all in favor? Posed, abstentions? Is nine oh three, zero. Next up is, um, board members, members, administrators workshop.
Great. So, uh, this evening, we have I did. Yeah, except for, uh, him because he came in later, but I can help. I can do that right now. Um, so Tim isn't here, but I have things generally queued up. Uh, I would like to
Put Randy with Josh.
Yeah, why don't we put Randy and Josh in a group together?
Oh, boy. Will they get along?
I don't know. Um, all right. So to start off our first round, we have Emily and Tim with Karen's. We have Ben and Rick with Ashley. Naomi and Leah with Danielle. Uh, Noah and Rachel with Ian. Danny and Nicole with Penelope. Melvin and Betsy with Tahia, and Randy and Josh with Matt Lash. So, uh, oh, and there's coffee and cookies, of course.
Oh, good.
Would anyone like maple syrup with their coffee? That's my favorite.
Like Alfie's?
Yes, I keep one in my sleeve when I speak. Would anyone like maple syrup for real? No? Okay, there's sugar and cream over there.
You got the jam?
Yeah.
Well, let me get in a little bit. Okay, you got it?
You got it?
Yeah, I'm not. Two legs doing all right? Oh, yeah.
Say you don't be taking a header. I'm going to put you out on seventeen if you can't afford the injury inside the pelvis.
They don't want no more weapons, don't they? I'm looking for Jack.
To be honest with you.
I didn't know.
Yes, so. We have our. So much.
Much. Sure. You. Yes. I. 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 So. I wanted. We're. In. The. I. But. It. That. Obviously. I. And. Now. Are. You. Are. Right. And. You. Are. You. And. So. Yeah. And. It. And. It's. It's. I. One. Of. Six. And. What. Learning. Year. Seventeen. Or. This. Man. That. It's. Because. We. We. And. Well. With. Big. App. We're. All. We're. All. Too. Easy. To. See. The. Skin. Sort. Of. Uh. You. 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 But. They. 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 Uh. And. Please. Babe. That's. Not. From. You. Or. Or. But. Not. But. Not. Oh. My. My. Five. Current. City. And. And. I. 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 Again. Boy. It's. 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 Um. It's. 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 But. I. 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 It's. 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 Sure. That. For. You. For. Seeing. That. Out. And. It's. It's. All. The. Special. And. It's. On. So. Yeah. So. 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 My. Life. Because. It's. Three. Five. It's. 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 And. What? It's. It's. Jesus. He. 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 So. What? It's. It's. Where. Look. You. Know. Uh. 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 Maybe. I. Did. I. It's. Because. So.[296.66]
And thanks. Raise that up for the board. Before we switch groups, I wanted to say two things as a, I don't know if you've ever experienced working in group process, but often we have those called a process observer. And the process observer would just reflect back to the group, things that are going well and things that they wonder about for consideration. And so as I, I just want to give you some process feedback before we go to the next group. Um, when we started this, what I saw was people kind of sitting nervously and looking next to them with their partner or the person in front of them and feeling a little anxious or just wondering how this was gonna go. When the administrative team met and we talked about doing this, they were like, are you crazy? Yeah, a little bit, um, definitely an adrenaline junkie. But, but I think what, what I wanted to give you for process feedback is that what has happened over the last four or five meetings is that not only is the process running smoother, your non-verbal communication cues are infinitely better. People's body language toward one another is very different than it was when we started. And so I just want people to think about that because the, 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 I was just talking, uh, at Noah and Rachel and Penelope's table that when, when the community of the school, the, the whole community, like the five pounds, the school community of the employees see you working together, they feel supported and you haven't even had to do anything. Cause they know that even if you don't agree, at least you're talking. Does that make sense? So the impact that you're having on the culture of the district by working this way is way more than I ever could have hoped for because I literally just made this up based on a combination of leadership and counseling theory. But I just want you to know that like, I, I'm like super happy about what we're doing. Right? Like this, right now, what we're doing could be replicatable for other boards. We may wanna talk about sharing it. I, I have some ideas for the future. I'm gonna give each cable a number. So I don't have to write up this grid and just say, go to the number that you left off at. You know what I mean? So I don't have to keep, cause I keep, we have people in and out and, and sick or whatever or working. And it's really tricky for me to try to like, make sure that you all meet with someone different. So, so what I realized, let's put a number on every table and whatever number Matt Lash leaves off on, if he leaves off at three, he'll go to four at the next meeting. So that way you can just keep, it'll be more easier, you know, it'll never be perfect because of absences. So let's go on to the next group, but I just wanted to say that like, the other thing that I noticed was, um, a term that we use in, in, uh, in education a lot called active listening. People are doing a really good job of, of like, I haven't seen hardly anyone cutting people off or, or not hearing each other or like being present to one another. Like I, I think you've done a really great job of that. And, and so, well, the reason why I bring these things up is that in order to, to, to take feedback for growth, we have to know what we're good at first. Because feedback for growth is just growth. Right? We're, we're starting from a place of strength, that we're doing right, good things. And then we're like, oh, well, we can do that better, or we can do this better. But the whole thing is already good. We just wanna make it even better. Does that make sense? So starting from a, a place of awareness of what we're good at is the best way to take feedback to get better. So, um, cause you know, the conversations are gonna get hard, right? So you know, I'm starting off light. The next conversations are gonna start to encroach on budget. And then the budget ones are gonna be really hard. So what I'm trying to do is to build the relationships in anticipation for the harder conversations about what we have to do with our facilities in staff. Right? So that, that's kind of where we're headed. Alright, so, uh, Emily and Tim will have, uh, Penelope. Uh, Ben and Rick will work with Ian. Naomi and Leah will talk with Tia. Danielle is going to visit with, uh, Noah and Rachel. And Matt Lash is going to see Danny and Nicole. And Ashley is gonna be with Melvin and Betsy and Karen Feig will be with Randy and Josh. I'm gonna get Tim. Penelope, Chris will be with Naomi and Leah. Matt Lash will be with Noah and Rachel. Ian will be with Danny and Nicole. Danielle will be with Melvin and Betsy. And Ashley will be with Randy and Josh.
I'm sorry. I see why I was so blind with so bad time out like. I got like, I got like. It's hard because I was. I had.
I've. Yeah. Yeah. I. I. See. I.
Alan's.
So. I. Now. I'm. Learn. I. 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 So. I. Think. That. Well. After. I. I. Um. Yeah.
You'll. Be. Yeah.
Just. Yeah. Yeah. Sit down. Don't fall asleep.
Yeah.
That's my. Definitely. You know.
I. I. It. Life. Time. Yeah.
Here. You're.
We'll. You.
Um. Is this something slightly. That is.
Well. Exactly. Yeah. One. Yeah. Interesting. Conversation. Oh. If. Sure.
It. Like.
I. Yeah, they got rid of them. They're good. We didn't. That's a really. I. As.
She. Yeah.
I. I.
I was. Oh.
About. I didn't expect. It.
I. Generally. I.
Daylight. Day. Eight. No, that's the problem. That's. I'm saying. She's nine o'clock.
I did that too. I did. It's. Look at that. While they didn't. I did that last.
You. Behind.
Huh?
Yeah. I'm. Been bothered.
Right. So. So.
So. Before. Break. I just wanted to take a minute to. Uh. To say that. Uh. I was thinking if people would like to. And this is not, I'm not asking you to vote. I'm just asking you to give me feedback because Danny and I will talk about. Planning the next meeting. I was kind of hoping to invite the principals in the central office administration and all of you and do. Like. A dinner. A holiday kind of meal for one hour. Would anyone be open to that? It's totally different. Cool. Cool. Sounds good. Cool. Would anyone be willing to like potluck it? Bring something?
Sure.
I'll coordinate the whole thing, but is that, I'm reaching outside the box here.
Yeah.
But I just thought it'd be nice for all of us to have some, some food together and just spend some time just. Talking freewheel.
Yeah.
Right?
It's not illegal. We could do that.
You can do it as long as you allow the public to attend.
Ah.
We don't have to. We don't have to. And you're not, you're not making decisions.
Right.
Right?
Years ago. Before the board started having committee meetings before the board meeting. We did an eye camera, how many years, but. One meeting. I can't remember if it was once a month or not. One meeting, the board members would cook the food. And then another board meeting administrators would cook the food.
So. I can't.
Every meeting was a party. I love parties.
And again, like he said, it was open to the public.
No, I, I, it has to be open to the public and honestly. You, you just don't deliberate. It's one thing to talk. It's another thing to deliberate and make a decision. Right? I always look at Ben because Ben is probably one of the best people at remembering the fine rules of anyone I've ever met. So Ben, am I? You think we'll be okay?
Yeah, I think so. I can look into it more if you'd like.
Up to you. I think it's going to be a question of. If we don't let the public in, that's a problem.
Right.
Right? And if people show up, I don't know. They're on a feed. If I have to go buy more pizza or something, I'm in. You know me. I'm always down for that. Um, but, but I, I'll send around a sign up sheet to see what people would like to bring. And I'll talk to the principals in the central office booth. And I'm willing to bet if we really are nice. Mr. Reese might get out the grill and help us out a little bit. So we could talk to Mr. Reese too. He loves, he loves some good cooking.
I don't.
What's that?
He doesn't ever need an excuse to use the grill.
I, I know. He. The first thing, when, the first time I met Brian, he was cooking. And we both looked at each other and picked up the things to get the meat and went click, click. I'm like. We're good. We're good. That's the best part.
I don't cook.
That's okay.
As long as you don't ask me to cook on your beverage. I can.
Drinks to paper goods.
Yeah. You can sign up for drinks. I always sign up for drinks and chips because I'm running around. So.
Is this, this is the place of a board meeting?
So we'll have, we'll do the general business, but instead of doing the round tables, we'll take an hour and just have food together. And just talk and hang out. Maybe I'll find a couple of other fun things to do. I just have a way of doing that. I'm sure that. Some folks on the admin team are a lot more fun than I am. I usually look at Ashley and Penelope when I want to do something fun. They just have this way of making things fun. All those bulletin boards out there, that was Ashley and Penelope. Right? So they, they've done a great job of sprucing up our space and our lives. To quote Nolan. But. Um. All right. I'm glad to hear that you're open to that. Thank you. I thought that'd be fun.
Okay. Okay. Next up, committee meetings. Learning committee is December eleventh, five P M at Prescott Memorial School. Finance committee, December eighteen. Four thirty P M at Central Office. Um, facilities committee. December eighteen, five thirty P M at Central Office. The next board meeting is December eighteenth, seven P M at Central Office. The next region. Board meeting is December seventeenth, sixteen, Mythical School of Technology. Let's say it seventeen, we are adjourned.
Leo. You can totally. I don't.
All right.